The first item is Lorax. If you say we'll develop, would you like to go ahead, please?
Sure. Bob Sol, Trintick, and Mike Griffin. We've got two items on the agenda tonight. The conditional use and the waiver request. Does your preference on which one we talk about first?
Conditional use is first, so...
Okay. That's you.
All right. So, as you guys know, my primary residence is the existing home at 658 Silver Street. For a while there, I explored the possibility of selling it and was told pretty repeatedly that it's just too big. Today's days, the McMansions are kind of out, which is for my own best interest because I love it. I love my neighbors, I love the property, I love the house. But I agree that it's too big. It's also unique in that there's a main house, and then there's an addition. I think I showed a picture of it, which has a kitchen and two rooms above it. It has its own entrance, it has its own exit. It would be a very simple situation to seal it off from the main house, even with a door, if I wanted to access it for some reason later. So I feel like of any house, this one really lends itself to the possibility of having an auxiliary apartment. It would certainly make the house even more perfect for me. I'm just three people that are living in the north, and my daughter and myself. So basically, I've kind of laid out my case. I typed up a quick little explanation as to what I was thinking and was hoping that if I could get the permission, that I could work with Tom to make sure it fits exactly what it needs to and that I have -- get a permit to put. Really, the only change to this house that would be required is there's an extra room on the other side of the house that I would convert into a kitchen. So, other than that, bathrooms and the entrances and the exits and the closets and everything really line up very well.
Your -- we have just one copy of your application drawing here, it looks like.
I had submitted one with measurements. I see...
Yes, so we just have that one. So people are not looking at what you're talking about.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
At the top of the page, it says either second level or first level. So there is another page with the other level.
I think there was a photograph, too. I don't know. I should have...
Is that in there?
They were attachments to the email.
Yeah, we did print the email.
I didn't think that...
I assume they were the same things there.
Yeah. I mean, basically, the photo just really, it points out the fact that this house has an entrance and an exit on one side, and then the main, the actual front of this house faces the waterfall, faces Cumberland Farms. I found it in the history of Rollinsburg, and back then, there weren't trees in between it, and it actually looked down over the, you know, the waterfall in front of Cumberland Farms. So currently, the way it's set up, that is the front entrance. And then there's a back entrance for the main house that goes on to the deck. It literally has four points of depress and it's divided into two sections. Like I say, what I was hoping is to get the permission and then to iron out the details with Tom.
Tom, I'll ask you for comments first.
Well, I haven't seen the proposal, so I'm a little...
Oh, well, we're still in the process.
Here it is.
I apologize for that.
Actually, if you can, and then pass the floor plan, one's down, too, if you don't...
Yeah, I would want for Tom to comment on verifying the floor plan and the square footage is important.
Right, there's two of them, so this just kind of, that's the second floor. The other one's...
This is, this is a...
The way this house lays out, it's really in two sections. There's two staircases.
I'm not real concerned about that. More about the accessory dwelling units as it's spelled out in the zoning ordinance. Did you, like, answer each of these points, by any chance, something?
No. What I did was I called here and found out that the day I was calling to submit to you was the actual deadline. And so Caroline gave me an application, and in that application, I did answer what I perceived as concerns or questions. I didn't see a list of questions.
Well, it's not written questions, it's a list of conditions.
I did read them, yes.
Just go over them, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. What page are we on, please?
On page forty-eight of the zoning ordinance.
And keep in mind that we changed some of these things in the March... Oh, I'm just hitting you left and right, aren't I? This board would recall, though, that we made some adjustments to the accessory dwelling unit provision at the March town meeting. And so I'm going to get the town reporter condition.
I have to start with your shoes.
Yeah. Which idea was that?
Article two references all the...
Oh.
That's probably the faster way for us to get the bottom of this.
We did something with the end, I remember that.
But we did change it from five hundred feet to seven fifty, and that was the most major change. The rest of it was just language cleaning up.
So this really shouldn't take much time. I mean, you only, it's only one accessory dwelling.
Correct.
Only allowed in lots containing single-family homes. Property owners occupy one of the two units.
Yep.
Only one bedroom in the accessory dwelling.
That I can't change, too. Or it got eliminated, right?
I don't know. I don't, I don't...
I think you made your changes to adhere to the state.
Well, so if we're in conflict with state law, we would have to adhere with state law, but I don't know, you know, when we went through this revision process around accessory dwelling units, the effort was in being consistent around state law. But offhand, so I would have thought that we would address that, but...
I think you can't limit to one anymore, but that's, I'll agree to whatever you come in.
So perhaps we should s...
I have the changes that we made here.
Was there anything regarding bedrooms?
No. So unless, if paragraphs A, B, or C reference bedrooms...
A, B, or C do not reference bedrooms.
Nope.
Adding paragraph ten referencing attachment to primary structure.
Right.
That was it. And then five hundred square feet and stuff.
All right, so we didn't change anything about bedrooms, so...
I'll accept it for what it is, and then if it changes at some point...
Well, I would say if we conclude that state law says we have to allow for two bedrooms, then, you know, there's a case for that, and we would have to allow that.
We could add that or not. What else?
Look in, you know, don't change it from there.
Well, no. I mean, we can't have regulations that are in conflict with state law. So, you know, if that is the case, then we can address that. I would say not in time for tonight, because we need to make sure that we're working on language and where it goes appropriate.
We'll follow up on that. And then, not more than two people occupying, is that the same, probably the same deal? We can't limit that, do we know? I'll look at the state regulations, but you have plenty of off-street parking. Not going to be condominium ownership. Subsystem adequate for both units. Accessory dwelling must be attached to the primary dwelling. Has convenient direct access to the primary dwelling. Parents shall remain out of single family. Size will be seven fifty. Primary dwelling and accessory share common utilities, including well, septic, heating, and electrical.
That's true. Nothing's individually needed.
The design of the accessory dwelling should be such that it would be writtenly adaptable to convert into part of the primary dwelling.
So how old does the septic system and, you know, what is it rated for?
So it's a four-bedroom septic and a four-bedroom house. I'm not going to add a bedroom. I'm not adding any square footage to the house.
Well, you're not adding square footage, but are you making a den into a bedroom in this conversion for something like that? What is your total number of bedroom counts after the conversion?
I guess it would be five. And I'm not positive what the septic is, if it's a four or a five-bedroom septic.
I think we should have that verified.
And would you consider, or would you convert one of the bedrooms in the main house to a den?
And that's a possibility, too, if I, because I don't need even the three. That's why I was, before I actually hired an engineer and started designing a kitchen and all that kind of stuff, I wanted to first make sure I could get it with the conditions that I have to resolve and then fine-tune it. But that would be a possibility. If I don't have a five-bedroom septic, or it's not easy enough to expand it, then one of the other ones that's technically not going to be used anyway would just become a, I could do that, I could make it a den.
That would work.
Yeah, it would work, so...
I know you...
We're only using two bedrooms.
You're skeptical, it's like...
No, I'm not skeptical. I'm wondering about process and where do we go from here?
I think first, what we do is find out from the applicant how big the system is, if it is four or five. And then he can, when he submits the building program application for the actual conversion and renovation, then we can confirm that the number of bedrooms in a building complies with...
I agree. Can we consider the application complete without the septic plan and just make that one of the...
Well, it's, I guess that's up to the board, but I mean, if...
I have to meet these conditions, even if you approve it. Just like if it was new construction, even if you approve that I can do it, I still need to meet all the conditions in order to get a permit and then an occupancy certificate.
Well, right, but I think I would want to...
It'd be improved subject to a meeting.
You go on, what?
So was it, I can't imagine it's rated for three bedrooms, for example, but what if the septic is really not even...
I would have to bring it up.
Then he'd, right.
He won't give me approval.
All right, so we're really just deciding whether the idea is okay. I apologize for monopolizing the floor.
The concept, yes.
If I were building new, I would still need to go through him completely, even though you've approved a house being that. He still has to make sure it's all here. I'm just thinking about it.
So just, I have to read a couple things of the statute. The statute says six seventy-four colon seventy-two entitled accessory dwelling units. This is Roman five. The applicant for a permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit shall be made adequate, shall make adequate provisions for water supply and sewage disposal for the accessory dwelling unit in accordance with RSA four eight five hyphen caple colon thirty-eight. But separate systems shall not be required for the principal and accessory dwelling units. In order to comply with this paragraph, in prior to constructing an accessory dwelling unit, an applicant, application for approval for a sewage disposal system shall be submitted in accordance with RSA four eight five hyphen caple as applicable. The approved sewage disposal system shall be installed if the existing system has not received construction approval and approved approval to operate under current rules or predecessor rules, or the system fails or otherwise needs to be repaired or replaced. So to me, that's saying that we don't have to know that in order to grant this, but prior to him building, he's got to do this. It also says, just going on some other things, that under Roman nine, under this section, a municipality may not limit an accessory dwelling unit to only one bedroom. So I guess that's what I have to add on that. This is Roman four. A municipal regulation applicable to single-family dwellings shall also apply to the combination of principal dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit, including, but not limited to, lot coverage standards and standards for maximal occupancy per bedroom. A municipality may require adequate parking to accommodate an accessory dwelling unit. So those are the end of my comments. Anybody else want to comment for the board or tell them?
I'd say the same way, in that he still has to meet all the obligations and statutes. So as far as presenting the idea tonight, accepting it as a plea, I understand at this point, I want to make sure that it is something that can realistically be done before investing in other engineering developments. I'm not saying...
Yeah, seems like the only real take to resolve is the septic. And if it isn't large enough, then he has to make a life.
So on that, I would move that we accept the application as complete.
I'll second that, too. And so this is what we wrote. So are we, are we making a final decision on this tonight?
We could. I'm just voting for completeness, but we could.
Okay, all right. No, I'm not, I guess I wouldn't mind pausing a little bit. I'm trying to go on pause, just because I'm trying to think if there's any, and it's practical matter, don't put a problem with it being held as complete, so whether there's any incompatibility somehow with what we, you know, the long process we went through through the whole development to begin with. I suppose not, but because it would be subject to the same ease and restrictions and everything else.
And because we have to allow it anywhere we allow single-family dwellings anyway.
And...
It doesn't mean any obligations. It doesn't mean any of the stipulations. It's going to come back up as...
Right, right.
We have that protection. The evidence still has to, which can we say it's complete and/or moving forward? He's still obligated to satisfy every bit of stipulation that is written or has been revamped to current and to be in line with the state.
And in terms of the water issue, that's not, we had a study from the fire department as it was laid out.
For the supply, for water supply, yes.
So it is one more unit?
It is one more unit.
But it was adequate? So normally, one more unit would not raise alarms for pressure issues.
Okay, okay.
But I appreciate that exercise in the context of development, though. I think it's good.
And number sixteen does say, accessory, excuse me, accessory dwelling unit occupancy permit will have to be obtained and shall be revoked if all of these conditions are not maintained. So there is an avenue, I mean, I don't see any reason to avoid. If the wish to grant it and then just follow up.
I think if finished the applicant, that's probably a better way to go, as opposed to requiring him to spend funds investigating his septic service, only to find out he's not going to be able to pursue it any further after that expense has been incurred. So I understand the cart before the horse, but like Tom said, we've still got the protection of knowing that if it doesn't meet everything as it's written, you know, that's, it means he may to meet those conditions. It's one fly.
Right, and I think they have conditions of approval.
Yes. Because I know you're concerned about, right?
Sure.
And I share those concerns, but I mean, sort of say, there is an out, the out being that he still has to meet everything that's been decided prior to this point in time.
Okay, all right. So your suggestion is to, again, find it complete, yes?
Just complete, yeah. And then we can discuss further.
Is there motion on the floor?
Yes, okay, all in favor say finding the application complete, say aye. Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it? All right. So, next thing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, right down?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Forgive me, it's been a very, very long day. Are there any members of the public who can comment upon this application for conditional Seeing none, I'm going to call a public hearing close.
Oh, you might want to suspend it, you have another issue.
Ah, I'm going to suspend it instead. All right.
We're all still learning.
All right. And then if you want to present the next issue, yes?
Well, there are separate issues.
Well, there are separate issues.
Yeah.
So you want to vote on...
Accepting the application.
So...
Can we do that?
I'm sorry.
No, it was complete.
Yeah, yes. And then you had a public hearing for the conditional use permit.
Yes, we're only on conditional use.
Right, but we should, I think, right, close public hearing and then...
I think we just...
Well, not since then, but two, which is...
Separate topics.
I apologize, sorry.
Yeah. So I think the public hearing can be closed.
Yeah.
And then we start over again with the waiver.
Second thing, sorry.
All right. So I'm closing the public hearing, and we're going to start on the second issue.
Well, no, we're not starting, we're going to vote on first issue, if you don't mind.
We didn't vote on the first issue. No, no, I thought I heard Tom say differently, but I'm not hearing one.
All right, so I would move that we accept the conditional use, that we approve the conditional use permit contingent upon the proof of the septic system being adequate for the proposed total number of bedrooms, the structure.
All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. All right. Now we can do now next thing. All right, I'm ready. So this is the second item that we have tonight, and this is relative to lots three and four of the three subdivisions. And this is, this is a great situation where as, what we'd like to do is put in a common drive. And normally, that's something that we like to do is probably with the open space subdivision that they're kind of in concert with the open space and less impervious and more efficient development. But in general, people don't like common drives, so we shy away from them. But in this case, Mike has an opportunity where he's got two prospective buyers of three and four that desire common drive. So it fits right, it fits right into how we would like to plan it from the beginning with the common infrastructure. So we have requested the, one of them is the... We have requested a waiver from section nine dot two H five that says all driveway shall conform to the side where setbacks contained in the current zoning regulations. So we're asking to allow the common drive go down the common lot line between lot three and four, and then have each gentleman split off and access their own residence from that. So we're proposing a thirty-foot wide easement, and the common drive would be constructed in that, and it goes back, it goes back about a hundred and fifty feet back off the public sack at Scarlet Lane, and we think it's a good idea. Tom, comments, please.
I think it's a good idea, Joe.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to bring up as a point of information that the shared driveway provision was created after the resident on now Nordic Lane.
Yes, I do.
I wasn't, I think you're the only one left, maybe Kevin.
No, Kevin was around. Kevin predates me, yeah.
Okay, so it is complicating, that language is confusing and...
It was a different situation, where that was coming right off four, and this is created not coming right off this public sack that is, you know...
And yet they're both commen, share driveways. And yet they're very different situations, and the application of each should be considered differently. But yet, it's one term for...
We're still looked at on a project-by-project basis, regardless of...
Well, right, but the language doesn't really treat them as two different things. The language treats them as one thing. And so my point with that is that there was eventually what turned into a subdivision off of a shared driveway. Someone fought long and hard for that. This isn't a subdivision off of a shared driveway. It's two properties sharing a driveway, and where, and so that's why the regulations are written, that the shared driveway has to meet setback requirements. And yet inherently, in this drawing, there would be no way to meet that. And that's where the language is flawed. So I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board that we ought to work on that at some point, but those are our regs right now.
So Tom, can I ask you, is the total impervious area smaller, the same, or larger than if two separate driveways had been constructed?
That's my understanding, you, less.
Less.
Correct.
These are the pork chop in narrower lots, so in this instance, it's going to be, there's a lot of benefits, aesthetic, and I think, like you said, less coverage. If there was a place for a shared driveway, and it's just a short, very short amount that would be shared, but where you can see where the, the house to the left range is off almost immediately, so it's just going to make a less cluttered subdivision, better front yards, more grass.
I think it's very unusual that someone actually requests a shared driveway. So I mean, where that's the case, it is going to be that future property owners will benefit. I think it's a win-win.
So I'm wondering if your covenant, or if there's other deed language that manages this relationship for future subsequent owners than the ones who are intending to purchase this?
They're forever home, but if they ever were...
Well, a hundred years ago, but it's not.
So at the closings, the lawyers that handle the closings will actually create that easement, and it will survive with the land.
I guess my question is more around maintenance and plowing, like that. Is there, is there some kind of...
There isn't at this point, but there...
But you're going to do that?
There needs to be, yeah.
Yes.
There would be an agreement where they would each be splitting the cost of maintaining and installing that driveway for their own, I guess. That would be a reasonable condition.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
I just have a question. Is it okay?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the easement that you have shaded out here, and I understand the building envelope and setbacks, the potential house, building envelope for lot three, that's pretty much where the house is going to, has to go. You're just extending the easement five, and then it really, then the actual driveway will probably go, well, or will the driveway, will this driveway tend to, I mean, I know you're going through the easement at this point, but is the plan to run the driveway just up to the first, furthest point that it needs to?
Exactly.
And not the entire length of the easement?
Bob went safe and just drew it.
Yeah, again, these are the same houses that we presented at the last meetings that aren't real houses. They're, they demonstrate that houses fit there, and so when this house actually gets designed, we'll fine-tune on how the driveway gets into it. So going to make sure we let them off.
But that driveway on lot four is absolutely going to break off early.
Yeah.
It has no, it's not a deep house. It can't be. Building envelope is pushing it up by the road. So it really will be a single driveway. As soon as it passes the, you know, first house there, it's not shared anymore.
Okay.
Shared entrance, really.
Do you mean you'll vote for public hearing?
Shall they vote it complete? Yeah, we should accept it as complete first. I'll move that.
One second.
All in favor of finding the, as complete, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? All right. Now open for public comment. Anyone that'd like to comment on this proposal for shared driveway? Seeing none, I think I'm going to actually close the hearing, close the suspended. Okay. I think we entertain more to let out to approve the question, yes?
I would move that we approve the shared driveway request.
A second.
All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it. Very good. Thank you, guys.
I'll call you at some point, and discuss it.
We can wait until that's done, right?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I just-
Oh, okay, congratulations. Thank you, good night.
I didn't, because the more I looked at it, I feel that, um, really it's a lot more volatile. In terms of, they don't perform in lots, and I sat down, I looked at the maps, and I said, this is a much bigger undertaking, and it can't be done lightly, and so I decided to go along. Right, no, I know, I know, and I'm, I'm, I am, I'm disappointed in myself, but I have to admit that I could not-
It's a big undertaking under short notice.
And I just felt that in responsibility, I couldn't just, it wasn't right to put something, and I wouldn't call it slapdash, but not carefully thought out and created problems, so. I hope Tom doesn't think I'm leaving out.
Not at all, no, I'm surprised that you would take it as an undertaking by yourself, but I'm sure there's a committee of several, and takes months to do so.
Alright, so I feel better about coming to the conclusion that I, in the, I bit off more than I could chew, so, alright.
Thanks for the thought.
It initially sounded so, you know, like, oh, how good to have, you know, more preserved.
Yeah, no, I just, it's, when I looked at it, was this, this is-
I would like them on discussion.
Yes, no, I think you mean discussion and everything else.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, the next item is the, if it was mentioned?
Yes.
And, so do we need to read these or not? I mean, we, uh, because we, this is the same language we have-
Yeah.
-previously agreed to, this is the-
Yes, the first one, I mean, the first one, I just put the butter in, like Sarah suggested, that, um, refers to the state regs. So it's basically gonna be, the butter is whoever directly adjoins a property or is across the street or string, as opposed to any distance. And then we have to change, if, if this is approved, we have to change the applications to reflect that, because as I recall, one application has a two hundred feet, and something else has a hundred feet. Oh, three hundred.
But, they're, they're not consistent.
We have to, yes. So that's that first new definition, the second one you're familiar with, um, the junkyard, and then the new section junkyard. I did make the changes, um, that we did, that we talked about, about the expense being borne by the applicant, and not allowing any kind of expansion. So, oh yeah, so on the second, on the back side, two-thirds of the way down, section four dot eight, I didn't realize in this warrant article, which I just realized, that all that stuff is already done.
So we've done that, so, right, to be clear, especially for Sue, because you're new, um, the version, the paper version is now, I think, two revisions old, two revision years old, so after March, and we, you know, it's, it's, it's cumbersome to print a new version every year, because it, it's just, it's just hard. But I think we should print a new version just for staff.
Third time, third time's right.
Yeah, and so it's getting to be too much to try to remember and reference what, what's not up to date in those versions.
Well, I, I, that's correct, but I have the most updated version, because I'm the one who usually makes the changes after they get approved. So we do have a copy that's completely up to date.
Which I think is the one that's on the website.
Yes.
So the website, just so you all know, if you, if you, um, put zoning in the search bar of the website, it will bring you to a link for the zoning ordinance, which is the most up-to-date version. So it, it does exist, and it is out there, it's just that we're all running on old paper copies, so I apologize for that.
I mean, is anything if we just reference the back, where it has like an index of the changes?
But thank you, um, Tom, for noticing that.
So the, um, the other ones, we did discuss, section eleven dot three dot two dot one, just delete by the planning board, that was where the special exception required planning board to, you know, say something was a reasonable use before they could proceed to the zoning board. And in the lead painting from that, section thirteen dot one, increase the dollar amount for a project that requires a permit from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. And that, this is one little one I noticed, thirteen dot four, it's, um-
Do we have to go, do we have to vote on a typo? Like, I, I would think that that's something we can probably just correct.
Let's do that.
Script reserve.
I, I would, I would guess that that's what that is, so.
Alright.
But thank you for, thank you, Tom.
So, what's that?
I'm surprised there's just one.
You what?
I'm surprised there's just one typo.
I know we discussed last time about the, the fee, and the, the same, did we determine, did Tom is charging the two fifty, which is the max, or not?
On the junkyard?
Yes.
Um, I think not, we have, uh, fifty, but that was one of the changes that we made, is, is the, uh, the fee is as established by the select board. So if the fee goes up, we don't have to change it in the ordinance.
Right, okay, that's right.
So that-
So the select board can change it anytime.
And that's the safest way to do it, to not have to revisit it, if, you know, you have three years.
And I, and I think it's a good idea that we, we recommend the select board is one of the fifty dollars.
Okay.
So just to make sure, I, I heard factored too, that we go onto the town, uh, website, and for search, we go into zoning.
In the search bar, put just the word zoning, and you'll get, um, some other references, but, uh, uh, about zoning, but the first one would be a link to the zoning ordinance. It also, um, that link, it gives you the, the ordinance, but it also gives you the zoning map. So that big unruly map that I brought from my wall, you can see that in color.
Okay.
Um, there's a link to that, too.
So Dwight Fann, any members of the public like to comment upon the zoning changes regarding the junkyards? I'm gonna close the public portion of the-
I share your assistance.
No, that's good. Okay, so, um, then I, I, I would make a motion that we, um, I would move that we accept all of these proposed zoning, zoning ordinance revisions as currently, um, proposed, um, and, um, to move them on to ballot.
So one question, so we discovered a problem, and we don't visit this year, but, so on page forty-eight, accessory dwelling in this, um, it's not forty, but bedroom that's in here somewhere. Do we change?
Number four.
What's that?
Number four.
Number four. Number four says only one bedroom is permitted in the accessory dwelling, so-
How is that word in the state regs, though?
It said you cannot limit the number of bedrooms.
Right. And not.
Right.
But you've got a square foot limit, so however they choose to use their square foot.
Right.
That portion, which is Roman nine, is what I said, it says simply, quote, in this quality, you know, not limit an accessory dwelling unit to only one bedroom, end of quote, so-
Wouldn't now be the time to clean that up?
Well, that's what I'm sort of wondering about, or-
Well, we, where it's very straightforward, and I don't think it is a huge exercise in language and, and anything else, we could just, um, propose to delete number four if you want to do that, and we can add, um, I just want to make a comment that we got a lot of zoning, we're making for a very long ballot on top of an otherwise very long ballot. It, it's, it should be done, that's not really the planning board's problem, um, but we already can't, you know, we can't be in conflict with the state law. We did not act in time for it with the state law, it ought to be cleaned up, um, so-
You're saying, it's not to overwhelm the voter to, to not do it this year.
I'm just suggesting-
It's not enforceable as it is, because the state of the country.
And we're at least now aware of that, and so we wouldn't try to enforce it. So I'm not sure that I'm, so for zoning here, it looks like we've got, um, two, so, so the junkyard, the definition and new section, I think, can be handled in one article, the butter is another article, and then, um, whether or not you can paint, and the cost, I think, is another, is a third.
This five of twenty-four would be-
Yeah, and so, so that's four. So we've already, we've got four, do we, do we want to add a fifth?
As long as this being, and, and I'm a lawyer, I don't really answer this, as long as the fact that four is not enforceable doesn't somehow invalidate the entire, uh-
No.
Provision, then I'm okay with that addressing it, if someone does, then that would be my concern.
I would just want to make sure that we're keeping track, so that next year, it is the first thing that we bring up to change.
What, can you tell me the exact section of that?
Sure, it is section of the state law, or section of-
The, the ordinance is.
It is, um, section eight, point one, three in perens, small four in perens, that's how we do it, I think.
It's eight point one, or eight point one, point three, point four.
Just so I know where it is, and I'll, I'll, I think so.
Which is currently on, on page forty-eight, yes, please do.
We also have to-
Mine, mine isn't.
We also have to just make a comment to renumber the following ones according to the-
Yes. Yes.
So in the past, we haven't renumbered, if we've, if we've stricken a section, we just, it's just-
Oh, just like now deleted as of whatever date?
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Okay.
Interesting.
Okay.
That's, I've seen it before.
The law does that, you see that in statutes all the time, that, you know, certain provisions are just gone, and you don't know if they are, they're just gone.
Well, they often say, it often will say-
Yeah, you have to check in history to see what they-
It'll be, that, you know, uh, eliminated or, or whatever, on such, such a date.
Right.
So that you have to go back and compare.
Right.
You, you know, when, time-wise, it happened, because sometimes that's, uh, relevant to enforcing someone's rights and throwing the-
So that's probably a good idea.
See the history, that way you can actually track the history, when the changes were-
But could you add the date, though, that it was-
Yes, because if, if, so if you strike something, that gets added to the index of exactly what was struck, at least it has been.
But it ruins on the body of the text where it existed, and then put it in there again.
Yes.
Well, you're keeping A, and it just says deleted on whatever date.
Right, so the index, the index of changes is a historical record of like what's been changed, so yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't go away, it doesn't disappear necessarily. You don't need to like go reference your old data.
Okay.
Okay.
No, that may be what's currently in effect cleaner to read, if that was omitted, and you just look back and you change the index.
Well, and the thing is like, yeah, it, I think it's easier just to strike it as deleted rather than to try to remember the whole thing.
Well, and then it brings your attention to the fact that something used to be that, that's not, that maybe you're curious about now and want to go see what that is. As opposed to if it's just gone and renumbered, then you wouldn't think of that.
Yeah.
Even though it may end up being, it's likely a moot point, but-
But it shows you that something that was in effect is, has been changed, modified.
And how, by the way, would someone who noticed that, how would they, where would they go to figure that out?
The back, the index.
The index, the index.
One, two.
Uh, right, right, right.
So you make, when you delete it, you make a note saying when it was deleted, so then you can immediately reference it in the back.
Okay.
So the information's all still there.
Okay, great.
Good.
Perfect.
It's all the business we have tonight.
Well, okay, so I made a motion, if somebody wanted to second it, that we have two of these, move these forwards to ballot.
Second it.
All suit, all suit.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you all.
The ayes have it.
Okay, so, let me know.
Yes, so is that a workshop?
Yes, I didn't know whether, um, it was necessary to propose.
Yeah, I think it's quite a good idea, yeah, I think you have to do.
Yes.
Yeah, we're dealing with something changing.
Yes, especially with the lighting changes, yes, so thank you.
So you want to propose a motion?
Yeah, I propose to approve them.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Correspondents, I just want to, um-
Did read it?
Yeah, I thought you might.
I have that. So, uh, does anyone else get a copy of it?
I, I emailed it to all of you.
Right, great, so-
And by the way, you all got a personal paper copy, I just thought I'd be more expedient and just email it to all of you, so that we could know it and digest it more quickly. I'm talking about the email with the attachment about, um, uh, land use, um, some kind of state housing land board.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
A lot of people on the heat, did you ever look like?
Well, it looked like they're the ones who are concerned about this and trying to rile the rest of us into action. Contact your senator and disagree with what's about to happen is the premise of the letter. But they're all from Northampton.
Alright, so that-
So there is, um, I believe it's something's a public comment period, um, with the state right now, um, because that's where it is in the legislative process. So, um, if anybody has any thoughts and wants to share them, you know, David Waters is your senator, as they say, and you're more than welcome to weigh in with him about how you feel about it. And, you know, and as much as any resident cares, you know, anybody really is, um, public comment is about public. So, you know, if you feel passionate about it, then you can spread the news to your neighbors and get other people to chime in, too.
Okay.
I have to say, if, if this is accurate, then it takes a lot of the authority for zoning work, planning work, planning boards out of the hands of municipal.
Right, yeah, it is pretty wild.
It is wild.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know where they would even be coming from, that seems like, I wonder who even sponsored that.
Yeah, that is sponsored, that's, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, approve the minutes, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda, do you, do you write the correspondence or talk to the correspondence?
Any other business?
You wish to turn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you for coming tonight. Yes, no, no, I'm sorry for my lateness and my, I didn't want to ruin your night, yes, I'll say it.